I'll call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Saginaw Planning Commission. May we please have the roll call?
Close.
Present.
Close.
Here.
Whiteinger.
Here.
Moore. Nash. Ostache.
Present.
Orange.
Present.
Bland.
Present.
Melon.
Present. We have a quorum. I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes of our regular meeting of September 23rd.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Are there any corrections or error? If no corrections, all those in favor of approving the minutes from September 23rd say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. We will go on to approval of tonight's agenda. We'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Some support.
It's moved and seconded. Are there any proposed additions to the agenda? If not, I will ask for votes to approve tonight's agenda.
If I may, I would.
Sorry.
I'm not sure it would need to be an addition, but we did receive the communication regarding case number J 25-2811, and I would like to add a discussion regarding that matter to the agenda.
All right. I will put that under other business. Any other additions? If so, all those in favor of tonight's agenda with discussion added?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We approve tonight's agenda. All right. We have now reached the public comment portion of the meeting. Good evening, everyone. I am the chairman of the Saginaw City Planning Commission. This is our regular meeting. When the petition, special land use, or site plan approval requests in which you're interested, calls, please come forward to the podium. We have none scheduled for this evening. But this applies to public comment also. Please come forward to the podium, give your name and address to the secretary for the record after your comment. Others may comment. The meeting is videotaped, so it is important that only one person speak at a time, and the audience observe respect for the speaker. Excuse me. Remarks shall not be addressed to individual commission members, city staff, or the audience. Speakers may ask general questions about the subject of their presentation. All such questions will be referred to city staff for appropriate follow-up. Speakers shall not ask questions of commission members. Each speaker is limited to three minutes and may only speak once. Speakers should limit their remarks to business within the jurisdiction of the commission. Would anyone like to come forward with public comment this evening? Anyone with public comment for us this evening? There is no one for public comment this evening? We will move on to other business. Other business. This time, I will ask for a motion to suspend the regular order of business. We have invited other boards and commissions to have a joint discussion this evening, so we need to go out of our regular order.
Some?
Support.
It's been moved and supported to suspend our regular order of business. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We shall go out of regular order of business. I wanted to welcome members of the other commissions and boards who've been invited this evening. I will start with a short presentation for the City Planning Commission. And Mr. Golen, if you have an order you want to call people up then, we will proceed. As you are aware, you are at a City Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission provides for orderly development of the city of Saginaw while protecting the public health, safety, and general welfare of the city. The Planning Commission develops and reviews the city's master plan, develops and amends the zoning ordinance, reviews development proposals, and annually reviews, prioritizes, and makes recommendations to city council regarding the public improvement projects on the city's capital improvement plan. Our most recent accomplishment on the Planning Commission was the development and adoption of the revised zoning ordinance. Our 2022 master plan identified many proposed changes to the zoning ordinance that focused on the following five items: making the ordinance and zoning map accessible online; ensuring the ordinance portrays clear definitions and requirements; include easily understood graphics, tables, or charts in the zoning ordinance; expanded the mixed-use zones to encourage reuse and redevelopment; and to allow for various types of building forms to encourage infill. Under our future goals, we are considering adding standards to allow for tiny housing within the city. We will begin updating the master plan. The master plan is a rowing, five-year plan, and it was last done in 2022. And then we are planning to update and approve the Parks and Recreation Plan. So those are some of the goals for our commission. Any of the commissioners have something they'd like to add? If not, Mr. Golen, would you invite one of the other commissions to present?
Sure. Absolutely. Why don't we start down at the end, the brownfield redevelopment authority?
Sure. Podium?
Yeah. Fine.
My name is Eric Tankersley, Chief Financial Officer for Shaheen Development, and I'm coming before the Planning Commission as board chair of the city Saginaw Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. The purpose of the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority is to promote the revitalization and redevelopment of properties within the city of Saginaw that may be complicated due to contamination. Our board members are asked to read and interpret brownfield plans, financial reports, and project renderings. A basic understanding of commercial real estate development, tax incremental financing, economic development, and property assessing our desired characteristics, as is an ability to communicate clearly, listen, and maintain professionalism with other commissioner staff and the public. The promotion of property redevelopment and revitalization occurs through the reuse of contaminated, blighted, functionally obsolete, and historic designated properties. After review and consideration of submitted brownfield plans, our authority makes recommendations to city council. These recommendations include authorization and permitting of tax incremental financing. Eligible brownfield activities include a range of planning and remediation efforts aimed at activating properties. These activities may include conducting assessments and subsurface investigation to identify the nature and extent of contamination, implementing cleanup activities to remove hazardous substances and pollutants, developing plans for the reuse of contaminated properties, evaluation of environmental impacts and do-care planning, cleanup activities, de-watering, excavation, and demolition. Primary goals for our Brownfield Redevelopment Authority are to create local decision-making on redevelopment, assist in enhancing the tax base through private redevelopment, and to provide an opportunity for the city of Saginaw to market difficult sites. I appreciate the commission allowing me an opportunity to share our brownfield redevelopment initiatives, impacts, and participation in making our community vibrant and competitive to attract and retain business. Thank you. Any questions that I can answer?
I thought we'd take all the presentations and then have a discussion or question period at the end.
Sure. Thank you.
Let me just go on next to the DDA.
Sure.
My name is Steve Hensley. I'm the Community and Economic Development Director with Saginaw Future. So going back here to 2017, Saginaw Future and the city of Saginaw entered into an agreement where Saginaw Future administers the Saginaw Downtown Development Authority. Those funds are paid through the Community Development Black Grant Program, so that all the funds that are collected from the traditional mechanisms of the DDA budget is then placed back into the program and the projects that I'm about to discuss here this evening. The DDA was founded in, established, I should say, in 1981 to halt property value deterioration and increase property valuation where possible in the city's business districts, and to eliminate the cause of deterioration and to promote economic growth. As I noted, the funding comes largely through the DDA's two-mil tax levy, which was adopted in 2017 via public vote, and that funds, for every $1,000 of property value throughout the DDA, $1 that goes back to the DDA's program and budget. In the past, it's been approximately $125,000 annually. However, in the recent years, that's bumped up, and this recent cycle fiscal year, we're at about $145,000. I do have a handout that I'm happy to provide following presentations, so everyone can have some other resource to look through. I've also included our DDA Board of Directors. They are a volunteer board. Ultimately, they make the guiding decisions and review any of our grant programs and make those recommendations for full approval. There's some core initiatives that the DDA is founded on, and it's placed in our development plan. First and foremost is to spur economic development. We do have our own grant programs through the facade development program, special events that supports nonprofits that are looking to host event within the DDA district that's free and open to the public. Those dollars are available to be supported in those initiatives. Also is beautification, streetscape, so flower pots that you might see throughout the district throughout the summer months, which were just removed in preparation for holiday planners that will see greenery as we transition to the holiday season. Again, those are supported through the DDA's beautification program. And then the snowflakes that'll be going up on the lights throughout the district here as we roll into November is again supported through the DDA's beautification work. Going forward, though, one of the newest initiatives we're excited to announce, and it will be going live here, is the DDA has developed a public arts grant program. So it'll be about $7,500 annually for artists and looking to develop art within the community. There's a program that announces what that looks like and what qualifies, and so that'll be going out live here shortly. Lastly, one of the other key pieces is security and safety. So throughout the DDA, we do support in respective measures of police overtime, typically during the summer months, really around April through September, but those peak months are usually June through August, where there'll be some police overtime within the district, usually in the later evenings on weekends. And so the DDA supports those overtime officers patrolling the district. Getting back to some of our metrics just recently, and I'll identify some of those and some of the projects we've worked on. So through the facade improvement grant program, this current year we're in, we've just increased our dollars for that line item budget to 50,000, which is the most in the history of the program. Just last year, though, we supported AC Cloth, who did a significant investment in the downtown business that's been here for many years, the Japanese Tea Garden and Cultural Center, the Temple Arts, the Saginaw Art Museum and Gardens, so the street signage you've seen out there, as well as some facade work at 300 and South Hamilton, which is the Shoemaker's property that used to be the stable, and then the ongoing work at Spicer Group. More recently, though, as we turned the corner past this July 1st deadline, as we rounded out the summer, the DDA did support grants for grappler rash CPAs and advisors that's now located above Michigan Premium Sugar on Hamilton Street, the new Gordy's Bar and Grill sign that just went up. Again, that was supported in some part from the DDA program. The Hunger Solutions Center, they'll be getting a new signage. DDA has supported that, as well as the 412 and 418 Hancock properties in Old Town. From the special event assistance, again, nonprofits that are looking to host events within the DDA that brings people into the community, into the district, can apply for those funds. This current year, we're just over $16,000 in available funds, but this last cycle, it was Castle Museum through their Jazz on Jefferson program, positive results. Downtown Saginaw received funding for both the Christmas Day Parade as well as Memorial Day Parade. The Saginaw Coral Society hosted a root beer choir, and that was supported by the DDA. Back to the beautification with the flower pots. There are actually 43 large flower pots throughout the summer that get planted by the DDA. There was 10 additional flower pots that were at one time overseen by the Downtown Saginaw Association, and those later fell. There was no one overseeing those. They essentially became orphans within the district, and starting at the time of the Memorial Cup, we adopted those, and we plan to continue to manage those indefinitely. And then there's also 30 holiday planners that will be stocked with the greenery throughout the district and the main thoroughfares during the holiday season, and then 78 snowflake lights that will be attached to a portion of the light posts. From the safety, with police patrols, the DDA has allocated $25,000 to this current cycle, and again, it pays police overtime during warmer months, mainly on the weekends. And then there's security cameras that are laid out within the district. The DDA collaborates with the city Saginaw Police Department, and our goal is to increase those numbers of security cameras than we have throughout the riverfront, and the DDA supports a portion of the underwriting, the monthly power and internet cost to support those cameras. Just to highlight a few projects we've been involved with and been at the forefront is the 303 Adams Street in Old Town. That's being led by Shaheen Development, investing $11 million in the redevelopment of the properties along Adams Street, and that building will have commercial spaces and then 30 upper-floor apartments. We've also assisted and been involved in the forefront, realizing that's went through the city brownfield plan. Another project we've been currently working on is the Savoy Bar and Grill in downtown Saginaw. That was built in 1914. It's over a 7,000-square-foot building. Most people realize and appreciate the historic and nostalgic past that that property brings. We've worked with the owners. They have applied for a match on main program, which is facilitated through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and it's actually the local municipality, in our case the Saginaw DDA, who manages and administers that grant program. So there's now been about four grants that have been awarded throughout the last few years to the Saginaw DDA. And again, we're the ones who field those at the local level, and we submit those on. It's a competitive grant program, and then the business is actually the sub-grantee. So they received the $25,000 match on main grant that will go to support their ongoing redevelopment of the property. And then the Historic Shook Hotel. This is a property located at 301 North Hamilton in Saginaw, originally constructed during the height of the lumbering era. It's a three-story, over 12,000-square-foot building. It has a rich history, most recently operated as a restaurant and bar. We are engaged with the current and new ownership of the property. We've worked with them on an obsolete rehabilitation tax abatement, and they're also pursuing a brownfield to support the redevelopment of a mixed-use property, reopening the main space as a bar and restaurant, and looking to provide apartments on the second and third floors. And then there's some additional developments that we've been involved in that continue to progress toward finalization. The Jefferson Apartments at 505 Millard Street, it's a 32,000-square-foot apartment building in the Cathedral District. We've been involved on that on a few different fronts, as well as the West Bank Lofts, it's a 40,000-square-foot mixed-use condos above the Jake's property on Court in Michigan, Court Hamilton, excuse me. And then the Behringer Fireproof Building on North Franklin. Again, that's a gem within the city of Saginaw. The city has largely been on the forefront of that, but we've been involved at the table in supporting their efforts as they entered into that agreement. And then the Southwater Street project that ran through the city brownfield, the 107, 111, and 121 parcels, we continue to support and be involved in those efforts, and then ongoing work at the Medical Diamond in that site. So those are some key projects that we've been involved with recently and continue to be involved in. But lastly, I would note that some of the stakeholders the DDA engages in is the Downtown Saginaw Association, the Old Town Saginaw Association. Those are two groups that meet monthly. We have a representative there on a monthly basis, discuss our projects, some of our ongoing grant programs, and the resources available to support those businesses and those members of those associations. And then we also engage with the Saginaw County Chamber of Commerce, Saginaw Economic Development Corporation, Saginaw Suit Pitch Competition. Not only is the DDA a partner, they also support through a special event sponsorship of that program. And then the Small Business Development Center, the SBDC office, and the Central Michigan University Research Corporation. As we look ahead to our strategic goals as the DDA moves forward, and it's an exciting time in the district, especially with the recent development that has taken place and much of it that's poised to continue, we will continue the facade improvement grant program that proves to be a widely successful program, the special events grant program, and then we'll continue those annual beautification programs with the introduction of the public arts program. And then safety and security measures continue to be important. The DDA board realizes that. We want businesses, residents, visitors to the district to feel safe, so we continue to invest in those resources. And then moving forward, we recognize the housing shortage as a whole that our community, the city, the county, and the larger region continues to face, and we will provide and continue to encourage mixed-use development, particularly ones that include residential development. And then we'll provide support ongoing with the Saginaw Medical Diamond and some of those spin-off projects and investments that may materialize from there. So again, as I expressed earlier, we do appreciate the opportunity to present here in front of the committee and the rest of the partners this evening, and be happy to answer further questions as we move along. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hensley.
Okay, next, the Historic District Commission.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Alex Mixter. I am the chair of the Historic District Commission. I'm extremely excited about this meeting and the kind of collaboration we can have. The Historic District Commission, we've existed since the mid-1980s, and that really came after a lot of major demolitions that happened throughout the city of Saginaw. What we do is we oversee changes to any of the historic sites throughout the city of Saginaw. So if they are on the outside of the building, that is the kind of thing that we would be overseeing. We have the work that comes in. We approve that work. We make sure that it's appropriate, and there are a number of historic sites that we oversee, but we also kind of have a bit of a discrepancy that we're trying to close, which is the fact that the 2022 master plan, there was 39 historic sites that were identified. We only oversee about, I'm sorry, I have a little bit of a stutter. We oversee three historic districts and four buildings. So there is not too much of that list that we are currently overseeing, and we, one of the goals that we have is to address that list and how all of that compares. So we've been doing historic district studies to kind of close that gap, to see what's on that list that we should be protecting as a local historic district, and we most recently did the Potter Street Station, and that was the first historic district in almost 20 years, I believe. So this is a map that we need to be updating and really looking at. The three goals we have are to complete the studies that we currently have. We have the Behringer Building that is currently under study. We've also got this area that we're currently in, from the intersection of Washington and Genesee up to Johnson Street along Washington Avenue. This is actually an area that is on the National Register of Historic Places, but is not locally protected. So there's a bit of a difference between those two things. And that really impacts the conversation around those buildings, because if it's not locally protected, the HDC does not have any jurisdiction over it. The National Register nomination is essentially a nod to the historic value, and it also opens up a 20% federal tax credit. So there is a huge financial incentive associated to the things that are on the National Register, but locally, the work that the HDC oversees and the changes to the buildings, those have to be locally protected, not just on the National Register. So there are tons of things that are protected through the National Register, but not locally. We have houses that are on the National Register that are gone now, and there was no process over what needed to happen with, you know, those kinds of buildings. The main thing, though, for the goals is just making sure that when we go through that list of what we identified in the master plan, there are things that are not even on that list that we've talked about that would be historic. So we're probably looking at close to 40 or 50 historic sites, actually. That's one of the greatest challenges, I think, of our commission, is that discrepancy, because there's a lot of stuff that we know is historic, that we value, but we don't necessarily oversee. So that's been a very large goal of ours, is to see which of those things on that list need to be prioritized as local districts. The other goal that we have is to become a resource to the city of Saginaw. One of the things that we really deal with that's kind of an issue is that people can have this expectation that we only exist to tell them what to do and what they can and can't do with their buildings. We'd like to change that, because there's a good reason for why we do what we do, and I think that's exemplified with the, you know, on a large scale, you can look at the loss of the east wing of the White House and the process that could have played out for that. But there is more of an expectation that we're just trying to tell you what to do, but there are 10 reasons through the Secretary of the Interior that we have to abide by for any work to be approved. So it's a very well-thought-out process, and it's an important one, but it's one that can be viewed as kind of a controversial one because of the nature of property ownership, and you can't tell me what to do with my property type things. So we want to change that conversation by focusing more on creating the kinds of resources that people need to understand why we do what we do and why we approve things the way that we do. There is a lot of major misunderstandings that happen about what kind of materials you can and cannot use when rehabbing the exterior of an old building, being able to describe the why of why we don't, you know, prefer vinyl siding or vinyl windows or those types of things on historic buildings, and also just really being able to help people know what they have as well, because there are a lot of people who, they have a historic building, and they say, you know, "I know it's historic, but I'm not sure what I'm allowed to do with it." We'd like to change that conversation and be more proactive, leading into changes to a building. The third thing we really want to focus on is the relationship of all the intergovernmental groups that we have here. If you think about what kinds of organizations would come in contact with an old building, you have, the DDA actually has acquired buildings that are historic, the school districts, the Land Bank. You know, the Behringer Building, that went through the SEDC before coming part of the city, or, I'm sorry, before coming a part of the city of Saginaw, and those conversations about the, you know, kind of redevelopment opportunities that exist. I think that we have a change in conversation that needs to happen, where we need to flip it from being a liability conversation and more of an asset conversation. I know that there are groups that have these buildings and say, "We don't want to deal with it," and that usually leads to demolition. So how can we instead change that conversation and identify the fact that most economic development that's happening is happening around the old buildings? A lot of the projects that were named by the DDA are, I mean, those are historic sites, and people like to build next to things that are flourishing, and Old Town is a great example of that, which is a historic district. So we want those conversations to kind of change about what we need to do with the properties that we have, how we can be more proactive and work with groups like the Land Bank to identify the buildings that they have in their ownership that we need to be a little bit more careful about. And those types of things are extremely important, because that's how we lose buildings without conversation, essentially. The other thing, too, is there is the opportunity for us to work with things that are in public ownership. ownership and do something right now that we would otherwise wait for a developer to do. So how could we partner, you know, with those other organizations to figure out, do we as the HTC have access to funding sources that, you know, other groups might not have? And can we use those sources to reduce blight, to make repairs to buildings, to improve conditions right now as a city, and not just wait for developments to happen, but also create the opportunity where these types of improvements can lead to development? So how do we work with what we have right now to drive it forward to what we need in the future? And that's where I think the Historic District Commission is going to play a very important role. So I'm, you know, looking forward to the conversation, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mixter.
And last but not least, the Human Planning Commission.
Good evening. My name is Valerie Tony, and I am the Chair of the Human Planning Commission for the city of Saginaw. The primary purpose of the Saginaw Human Planning Commission is to provide constructive and effective citizen input in an advisory capacity to the city council in order to assist them in solving community, social, and physical problems. How do we do that? Our primary job is to review applications for the city's emergency solutions grant, community development block grant, and the home program grants, and any other funds that come to us from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. And then we make funding recommendations to the council. It's our responsibility to get acquainted with all of the applicants. We do interviews, we visit the sites, and we make informed decisions on who should be awarded funds based on things like the need of the community, in that particular community, capacity to produce the desired outcomes, and past performance. There are 21 seats based on the old quadrant system. We have one seat from each of the four quadrants and one seat representing the downtown, Old Town district. So usually at this time, we would have just closed our application process, and we'd be preparing for interviews. Unfortunately, that process is on pause due to the federal government shutdown. So we've been instructed to continue with our five-year consolidated plan, so that that's going to be our main priority for right now. Interacting with citizens and agencies that are currently funded are also priorities as we work toward finding solutions for the issues in our community. A third priority for us is to stay connected to the changes that are happening at the federal level, so that we can help our community in the future. Now, on October 22nd, myself and my fellow Commissioner, Mr. Porterfield, we conducted a survey during the trunk-and-treat event at Splash Park, in the rain. In the rain. The survey questionnaire asked a couple of questions. One, if the city of Saginaw received more CDBG funding, where would you like to see those funds spent? Answers were, that they could choose from, were demolition of vacant houses, repairing existing houses, youth programs, or something other. And they were able to list the other. One of the things was roads. The majority of the participants during that time, they wanted to see those funds utilized to create youth programs here in the community. That was just the first. We'll have several more going forward, so that we can get input from the citizens in our five-year plan. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. While we're still out of regular business order, I guess the best thing to do would be open the floor for questions either from the Commissioners on the Planning Commission to our invitees, or if you have detailed questions, you want to ask us about something. But I definitely have some comments I want to make with some of the people who presented, but I won't monopolize the time. Any of the other Commissioners want to hit with somebody on something?
I have a couple of questions.
Go right ahead.
How many brownfield projects are going right now?
I don't have a tally on the number. Some are in varying degrees of their process, which could be the approval of the plan to the actual redevelopment of the project. Once the plan is approved, that's effectively the first step in the process, so until a developer submits eligible activities that are reviewed, audited, and approved, the reimbursement of those costs through the tax incremental financing, you know, are not effectuated. I will say that on my time on the authority, which dates back probably four years, we've seen over the last 12 to 18 months, a substantial increase in redevelopment activity in the city of Saginaw. North of five would be my answer. You're welcome.
Alex, has the human, the historic, the historical, the historical, the historical looked into trying to provide revolving loan fund to help these people that have historic buildings, so that they can improve those with low interest rates?
That would honestly be a dream. It, I mean, it all boils down to funding and, you know, where that source would be. But I've always thought that, you know, really the DDA facade grant program is a really great example of the kind of things we could be doing as well through the historic district, where there are things that a lot of the property owners, you know, they might have a project or something like that, that's, you know, the cornice, or, you know, some kind of detail that's been lost over time that they'd like to restore to. You know, those kinds of opportunities that are unique to historic properties, I think, would be really great. A revolving loan program, I think, is a really good idea, though, because of the fact that a lot of the historic districts are in areas where we have income, you know, constraints. And it's not always that people just don't want to fix their houses, it's, you know, oftentimes that they can't. So if there is, you know, some opportunity to make it much easier for people to invest into their properties, I think that that would be not just good for, you know, the commission, but also, you know, that'd be good for the neighborhoods as well, because you'd see a lot more improvements going on in these old houses.
So you haven't found anything at the federal or state level that would allow you to do something like that?
That's getting a little tighter over time, but the, there's been a lot of grants through the, or, I'm sorry, through the State Historic Preservation Office, and that's out of Lansing. They've actually just recently administered a grant for the Weber Street Gate. So that is, I believe, the very first grant, you know, we've received through SHPO. So there is a lot of opportunity for those types of funding sources, but, I mean, like I said, it's getting tighter, but it seems like the best opportunity would be through SHPO for us, but would be very open to any conversation of an allocation that, you know, would allow us to oversee something like that. Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Ostache.
Yeah. He mentioned revolving loan. Through the American Rescue Plan money, we allocated a million dollars for such, but I can't remember all the particulars to it. It's been kind of, it's been a while.
That was for the brownfield authorities.
So that was for the brownfield.
Yeah, that went to the brownfield.
That's what I thought.
And it's part of your strategic goal, actually brought that goal with me today, that you wanted to secure viable brownfield redevelopment plans that provide a $200,000 revolving loan within 18 months to 24 months, and to replenish these funds for future loans. And so one of the projects that Eric has discussed and has been mentioned is 303 Adams is our first brownfield that received a loan from the brownfield revolving loan fund.
Okay. So technically, maybe if they could qualify for the brownfield, they could qualify and apply for, for that?
Most of the property that we're looking at at brownfield are normally commercial property.
Commercial, okay.
Yeah, because we're really dealing with, like, developers to, you know, revitalize property that's either contaminated or had prior use. So we're really dealing with commercial properties at that point.
Okay, thanks.
And other Commissioners? I had a couple of questions or comments. He's right behind the post in front of me, Mr. Hensley. I'm very much interested in your presentation, because I feel like the authority in some ways hides its light under a barrel. You have a number of projects going there that the depth and breadth of what the DDA is doing, I think, is kind of hidden. And I don't know, I hope that meetings like this have helped some of that get out to the public. But do you make an annual presentation to the council, or perhaps some public publicity with WSGW Radio or TV5? Because it's lots of little pieces, but they're all important little pieces. When you put together all the parts for the downtown area, from the flowerpots to Christmas decoration, to the increased security, it really is a very comprehensive approach to the downtown areas. And it stretches farther than that, down to sometimes residential properties. I speak as someone who got a facade grant for a residential property, because I happen to lie within the DDA. And so, again, it's small things, but they can add up. Mr. Mixter, from the Historic District Commission, I want to see if I'm understanding this right, using the Weber Street Gate project, that is a national historical site or building, and we also have a local historic district for that one?
Not yet, actually.
Not yet. Is that in process? Are we trying to?
That is actually one of the many on the list, actually. And that, I believe that project was run by a couple neighborhood organizations and things like that, that that was, that that came from that, I believe. I'm not sure exactly, but...
What was the question for?
Well, I just, the Weber Street Gate is a national historic property, but we...
That's led by the city.
Excuse me?
That, that project's led by the city. Council actually allocated funds to clean up the surrounding fairgrounds property. Actually, it was just for the demolition of the two remaining buildings. We had additional money left over, so I went through and identified additional cleanup that we could do, including removing a bunch of fencing, and there was some platforms and things, some other small buildings, there were still foundations, we moved those, we still had some additional money. So then we've been moving into now creating a memorial and park and restoration of that corner property.
But we do not have a local historic district designation like was just recently.
It's a national historic district.
Just a national one. Potter Street just got a local one, right?
About two or three years ago.
Yeah. So I'm just comparing it, some we do and some we don't.
Yeah.
Even with national. I want to personally thank everyone who came and presented. I think we've seen a number of areas where goals intersect. And I know pretty much everyone over there has been in front of the Planning Commission at one time or another for a project, so.
I just wanted to say thank you for coming out and joining us and discussing what your board does, because we're all interconnected, we're all effectuating economic development here in the city. And so it's very important that we understand which each of our different groups brings to the table. And we're seeing that tonight. We're seeing from, like, the Human Planning Commission and how they're connected with the subrecipients, nonprofits, emergency shelters, and how that has an impact on the neighborhood, to the historic district, where you're revitalizing old homes in the DDA, where you're, you're growing the DDA district into the brownfield, where we're trying to redevelop lighted property. I just think that's important, that everybody knows and understands how we're interconnected and why we're, we work together, what we should be doing to go forward together, to make cohesive decisions as it relates to economic development here at the city of Saginaw. So I wanted to thank you for that, for being here tonight for that.
Thank you.
I have one other comment that I hope the public listening to this meeting will understand. We often have openings on our boards and commissions, and you see the important work that we're getting done. If you have an interest in one of these boards or commissions, look into whether there's an opening that needs to be filled, and you can really see how that works. A lot of what every Commissioner here has mentioned, we provide the nuts and bolts that goes up to city council for approval of different projects. And so if you're just kind of following what the city council does, we provide them the reports they make their decisions on. And I think that's important to know, that if you want to be involved at the city level, showing up at a city council meeting to make public comment is often the last step. You want to be involved at this level, either as a Commissioner or attending our meetings of the various boards. So I hope that reaches everyone. Commissioner Orange.
Yeah. So I just had a quick question, kind of merging what Mr. Mixter had said and some of what Cassie said about, you know, some historic sites have national recognition and some have local. Is there an interest in connecting those? Because I would imagine that, you know, if the Weber Street, the gates, right, if they have a national recognition, then would it not be prudent to go through the process to give it a local historic designation? So that, you know, it doesn't have to be one or the other, they don't have to be mutually exclusive, they could, you know, it would, it wouldn't hurt. And so we're facilitating that conversation tonight, right? But, you know, how can we, or can you all, or can the bodies come together to make sure that both designations are provided where appropriate?
Well, and that's kind of what Alex brought up. So there's just a process to do either or. Typically, it starts with becoming a national, and then later on, the local historic district will also do their own studies and then submit it through to become a local historic district. The main difference is in the oversight being locally or nationally. So if we do receive any grant funds, any kind of benefit, for example, we received a state historic preservation grant, now we have to follow all of the Secretary of Interior standards for the renovations of that historic structure, for the gate, for a specific. So that is what the HTC is working through, is identifying, because it is quite a process, especially when it's a large area like the area we're sitting in. They have to study every single building, and Alex or Kevin or Bill can speak more to that process, but, yeah. It's a process.
Yeah, and there's a lot of work that goes into that, too. There's a ton of research. We have about three to four volunteers, I would say, you know, that are writing these studies and doing a million other things, wearing a lot of other hats. But I think that, you know, what you're identifying is, you know, I mentioned that we have a bit of a discrepancy in our master plan, because there is, we have, you know, buildings that are on the National Register but not local. We have things that are local but not on the, but not on the National Register. We also have things that are neither. We have things that are identified as could be, and then there are things that, you know, have we even thought about that one house over there that is actually probably eligible, you know, to be a historic? And really, if it's over 50 years, it's actually kind of ironic, because the malls are coming up as a discussion of, those can actually be considered historic buildings now, because they're over 50 years in most cases. So it's a constant, you know, ongoing assessment of what we have, and I think it's really, I mean, these are our strengths, you know, these are the things we're most proud of, these are the things we put on our branding and, like, on all of our newsletters and stuff like that. We have, you know, like, photos of Old Town and things like that. So these are things that, you know, they are important, it's just a matter of identifying each and every one of them. We are a very historic city, so it's kind of hard to, you know, throw a rock and not hit a historic building here. But there is a lot of work that needs to be done, but we could really use, you know, the help through grants and things like that for the organizations we could be hiring that usually do these kinds of studies, too. We're just really bootstrapping it right now. We're just really bootstrapping it right now, and, and just, you know, getting our volunteers together to see what we can do to get these done. But there is a lot of work to do.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ostache.
Real quick, Mr. Hensley, because you went through a lot, you went through a lot of projects that you're working on, but one that you touched on, that people probably didn't understand, the addresses that you gave is the Hubble, it was the Hubble Building, the one with the eagles on it that we lost. And so that is the, there's three properties that are involved in that. Could you expand just for the public and those watching, like, what that project is about? It's kind of, it's a multiplex, and staff might be able to help on this, too, because we did it...
We haven't received site plans yet. Once we do, they'll have to come to the Planning Commission.
Gotcha. Thanks. Because it's very limited. That is, that is a...
But it does have a description.
Yeah.
You have a general description.
Yeah, it'll be an event space that'll, and that's already been through the brownfield, so I think next stop is you guys. So I do want to, if I could just address some comments from earlier, at the moment, I do appreciate the compliments to the DDA and the work we've done. And really, you know, when you compare it to other districts, even across our county, the Saginaw DDA's budget is, to say it's modest would, would be an understatement. So to do the work that the DDA has done has been rather impressive. But again, it comes back to the partners and the stakeholders and the developers and the investors. And then also, I'd be remiss if I did not note that, you know, one of the key pieces, I think, that really kind of keeps the wheels moving on this front is, with, with my organization that I represent, and I'm fortunate to be employed by Saginaw Future, you know, where, as I mentioned, the CDBG grant dollar supports the work that we do. So although we have the volunteer board that makes the ultimate decisions, when it's boots on the ground and keeps these, these activities going and meeting with different associations and developing the agendas and minutes and grants and bringing it to the committees, and then also, just by nature, that Saginaw Future's on the ground, working on some of these other projects, that, you know, we realize the resources and the incentives so we can sort of plug and play with those in accordance to the DDA. And again, it really just kind of, as a MyRite, it crosses the work that all of us are talking about. So again, I think it's that synergy that really has developed and allowed us to do the work that we do. So, thank you.
And Mr. Hensley is being very modest. The DDA, as a board member on the, on the commission, we spend no dollars on administration. So, Mr. Millen, to your comment, the vast reach that the DDA has as a result of the partnership with Saginaw Future, which is funded entirely by a CDBG block grant, which under the most recent legislation will be eliminated moving forward.
Christopher Clark.
Yes, thank you. These inquiries we directed to Chair Mixter, Historic District Commission, but it's a follow-up to a question by Commissioner Orange. First of all, do you experience, as part of the historic commission, do you experience pushback sometimes to efforts to create a historical district or to take action within a historic district?
That's actually a very common issue. That goes with, you know, the comments that I made about the concern that we're trying to tell people what to do, we're trying to prevent development from happening, quite the opposite. I think that these kinds of properties and these kinds of projects are the things that should spur development.
And my, following that, you've heard today the different commissions that work within the city to help make development possible. Do you think there are some connections that you might be able to utilize with each of these commissions to improve or enhance your ability to move forward on these projects, or even to develop a historic district?
Yeah. Yeah, there was actually a lot of thought that, you know, the intersection of Washington and Genesee, they just recently revealed the facade of the old Mason Building. It's got the big WSGW on the top of it. You know, I really see that as an opportunity for the amount of organizations that are governmental there. You have a building owned by the land bank and it's in the DDA. There is, you know, lots of economic development that, there's a ton of potential for at that corner. So there is really not one thing that we wouldn't touch, actually, as the HTC. And, and there's a lot of, you know, really amazing nonprofits that are operating, like, out of spaces that might be in historic buildings. There are a lot of issues related to housing within old buildings. And, and I really think that, you know, these conversations are extremely important because I think our biggest curse in Saginaw is operating in silos. And so if we're able to really see, you know, what the intentions are of each of the commissions, I think that there's, there's a lot of things that the HTC could be involved with, and there's a lot of things that I think we really need to be at the table for.
So my next question really is directed to all the commissions that are here. Are we all willing to do our part to help the Historic District Commission do its job? Because if we are not, then there's a problem right off the bat. So, I mean, some of us might have ideas on our own commissions of what some of these things could be done to, to improve or to help the Historic District Commission do its job. But if we don't offer those suggestions, if we don't bring them forward, then, then we're actually creating problems. And I think that's a bad mistake. So I really am happy that you were here, every commission that made a presentation today, because it's, I think it gives us the opportunity to realize we can even do more for the city than we are doing now. So I'm really enthusiastic about this opportunity, and I'm also hoping that everyone here will take the opportunity to do more for the historic opportunities that we have, because that is often a cornerstone for development. We just got to change our mindset. Demolition has been a real curse for the city for a long time. I was on the city, I was working for the city as a city attorney in '79 is when I started. And that was when some of the worst demolitions were going on. But it was just an attitude of, it's easy to tear it down, then to make the effort to preserve it and to use that for economic development. So I am hoping that all of us will look at it that way now, instead of the way it was looked at in those years. Thank you.
All right. If anyone has any other comment, I will entertain a motion to go back into regular order of business. Thank you again to all Commissioners who attended.
Move to go back into regular order of business?
Support.
It's been moved and supported to return to regular order of business. All those in, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I suggest that maybe we take a sharp break if these folks want to keep on here.
Oh, well, that seems like an easy thing to do. If anyone doesn't wish to attend our last item of discussion.
The last item, just for your guys' information, is the Boys and Girls Club expansion.
Well, everyone seems to want to stay. Yes, our last item of business is just, some of the Commissioners wanted to have a little discussion on this item. It is not an action item at this time, it's more of a communication. So everyone got this in their packet, proposed 3,000-square-foot expansion for the Boys and Girls Club of Saginaw at 1781 Fort... Any Commissioners wish to comment at this time?
After reading over the communication, I guess I had several questions about it. First off, where the expansion is going, that's city property, is it park property?
It was deeded to the city with the understanding that, at the time, it was the...
One.
No, it was the, the club that promotes business.
Junior Achievement.
Junior Achievement. And then likewise, the caveat was that it would more or less include all kinds of types of youth, recreational development, I guess, or development through recreation. Is that it's your question?
No. Is, is it designated park property?
No. Okay. It's not.
Okay. The change in the description, is that a change for the lease purposes?
The change in description is for, so if you look at that diagram on the front there, the building is actually going to go over the property line. The Y owns this small section of the parking lot here. So we currently have a deal with the Y where they are going to donate that property to the city.
Okay.
So that all has to take place prior to that construction.
So that would need to be a requirement of any, if for your action, it requires that you have them deed that as part of the contract.
Yeah, because then the building would be on Y proper, partially on Y.
I have some additional, just so I understand, is there a demolition involved? Because I saw that someplace. It's just an expansion.
Yes. There's three, there's currently two buildings there, and this is just the third.
Okay. And is that that small, the third one, is that that?
So it's just, it was drawn on there.
It's the smaller rectangle.
Right, yeah.
Okay. I wouldn't, I'm glad you answered the question about parkland, because that did concern me. That had been an issue on another matter, so I was concerned that was an issue here. The, there is a current lease, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And it's from the city to Boys and Girls Club?
Correct.
All right. Is this particular portion of land that they're expanding to, is that also covered by the lease?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's what I have. Thank you.
Any other Commissioners? That is the end of our business today. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move?
Support.
Moved and supported to adjourn. Without discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?